Good afternoon. I almost said good morning. Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Ah, that's better. I've been up for a long time and I'm tired, so I need some good energy. Can everybody start moving close to the front, please, so we can fill in and hear this dynamic group of people that we have before you? We have something that, to me, is very unique. And on the topic of becoming the change that you want to see, we have the brothers that's gonna tell us how do we become the change that you want to see. They always say we never let them talk. Well, today they get to talk, and not only that, but they're gonna get to impart some wisdom from us from a patriarchal point of view. How you like that? And of course, we have to have a sister to keep them on target.
That's right.
Hello, somebody. My name is Dr. Kwame Anderson, and I'm the Vice President of the Programs Department at the Congressional Black Caucus Foundation, and it gives me great joy and pleasure to stand before you today. To my right is a dynamic lady that I've always looked up to, Ms. Deb Speed. She works for Verizon, and they have a very compelling video that she's going to queue up for you, and I'll let her tell you more about it. We'll watch the video, and then we'll get started right into the panel discussion. Thank you.
I'm Deborah S. B., and we're proud to support the Congressional Black Caucus Foundation. And many of you know Verizon as the cellphone company or the wireline, the files company, but we're more than our technology. We do more in our communities. We're a diverse company. We support diversity, and inclusion is a commitment in our company. Many of you, we believe that the power of our technology give us big responsibility and big opportunity. And what we do at Verizon, because our networks have the power to transform society, we make it our business to use our assets to make the world a better place, especially for our youth. So I want to talk to you a little bit about some of our programs that we have targeted to our youth. Last year, in 2015, we launched our first-ever program with HBCUs and Hispanic-serving institutions. And this program target African-American and Hispanic males between the sixth and ninth grade. And this program, in conjunction with HBCUs, it provides these young students with in-depth summer immersion STEM program, where they learn 3D coding, they learn computer science, they learn printing, they learn entrepreneurial skills, they also learn how to speech writing, and just a whole host of things. And wrapped around that program includes a year-long mentoring program. And this program has inspired these kids to want to major in STEM, has inspired these kids to become creators, because we're inspiring kids today to be able to have a brighter future tomorrow. So I'd like to share with you this video. It's a 42-second video. And this video basically tells the viewers to check your stereotype at the door, because our children are greater than you think. They are brilliant, they are intelligent, and they are creative. So if we could queue the video.
Can we dim the lights, please?
Turn them off.
Somebody in the back, can you turn off the lights, please? Thank you. I won't seem petty.
You don't know me.
These arms hold the weight of my ambition. These hands craft efficiency. I build machines that gather light and give energy to my needs. Solar panels that power to make our future green. You don't know me. You just see me. My fingers are on the pulse of man's quest. I build robotics to inform what's next. And these innovations lie our success.
You don't know me.
I will belong to no limits. I code, I build, I create, I make.
You don't know me. You don't know me.
You don't know me.
But you will.
Sorry about the choppy video, but this is just one of the programs that we are targeted with our youth, because our objective is to reach out to youth in underserved communities and help bring to them a brighter future through the use of technology and innovative learning. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Deb, and thank you for all that you do. We need people like Deb Speed and major corporations like Verizon to interject our points of view and to really help dispel the myths, so I appreciate what you do. And because of that video setting the tone, it brings us to why we're here. You don't know me. So how can we become the change that we want to see? And I want you to think about that, and I want you to think about it from a perspective of how can you yourself become the change that you want to see, individually, so that as collectively, we can reach our common goals as a people. To facilitate this discussion, we will have Ms. Ebony McMorris, and she will take it from here. This sister is a bad sister. She's on the radio, she does some of everything, and she has one of the best spirits and energy and vibrations, and I've enjoyed working with her over the past few weeks to bring this together. Give it up for Ms. Ebony McMorris.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming out to this Emerging Leaders Panel Discussion. I just heard that they got Malik Yoba somewhere in the building and some other people, and y'all felt it necessary to come here, so I'm very happy, because there's a serious work that needs to be done in our community, and it's to us to make it happen. So without further ado, I'm going to bring up our panelists and give them a very warm, warm round of applause as they come to the stage. I first like to bring up Pastor Tony Lee. He is the founder of Community Hope AME Church in Maryland. Next up, Brandon Anderson, public speaker, inventor, and entrepreneur in Washington, DC. Is he here yet? He is. I'm sorry. I thought he was. He's on his way. Next, I would like to bring to the stage Darryl Green. You all know him, NFL Hall of Famer, entrepreneur, and also motivational speaker. Next coming to the stage, Ndaba Mandela. He's the grandson of President Nelson Mandela and founder and chairman of the Africa Rising I'd next like to bring up Edwin C. Chapman. He is an assistant professor at Howard University. He is over the Department of Psychiatry. You can sit right next to me. One more round of applause, please. I want to read from an essay that I found extremely powerful. I mentor some young men in the community, and I asked one young man to tell me how he felt. He had a hard time articulating with the recent events and police shootings, how they were making him feel, but he did lead me to an essay by James Baldwin, and I'm gonna read that to you. "I have witnessed and endured the brutality of the police many more times than once, but of course, I cannot prove it. I cannot prove it because the police department investigates itself, quite as though it were answerable only to itself, but it cannot be allowed to be answerable only to itself. It must be made to answer to the community, which pays it and which it is legally sworn to protect. And if American Negroes are not a part of the American community, then all of the American professions are fraud. The principle on which one has to operate was that the government, which can force me to pay taxes and force me to fight in its defense anywhere in the world, does not have the authority to say that it cannot protect my right to vote, or my right to earn a living, or my right to live anywhere I choose. Furthermore, no nation wishing to call itself free can possibly survive so massive a defection. For example, and this lobby, which was able to, in Albany, a lobby which was able to rebuild all of New York downtown and for money in less than 20 years, is also responsible for Harlem, the condition of the people there, and the condition of the schools there, and the future of the children there. What to do? Why is it not possible to attack the power of this lobby? Are their profits more important than the health of our children? What to do? Are textbooks printed in order to teach children, or are contents of these textbooks to be controlled by the Southern, by the South, and the commercial health of publishing houses? What to do? Why are Negroes and Puerto Ricans virtually the only people pushing trucks in the garment center? And what union has the right to trap and victimize Negroes and Puerto Ricans in this way? None of these things, I would say, could possibly be done without the consent and fact of the government, and we in Harlem know this, even if some of you profess not to know how such a hideous state of affairs came about. If some of these things are not begun, I would say then, of course, we will be sitting on a powder keg all summer. Of course, the powder keg may blow up. It will be a miracle if it doesn't. Now, what I have said about Harlem is true of Chicago, Detroit, Washington, Boston, Philadelphia, Los Angeles, and San Francisco. It's true of every northern city where a large Negro population exists, and the police are simply the hired enemies of this population. They are present to keep the Negro in his place and to protect white business interests, and they have no other function. They are, moreover, even in a country which makes the very grave of error equating ignorance with simplicity, quite stunningly ignorant. And since they know that they are hated, they are always afraid. One cannot possibly arrive at a more surefire formula of cruelty. This is why those pious calls to respect the law, always to be heard from prominent citizens each time the ghetto explodes, are obscene. The law is meant to be my servant, not my master, still less my torturer and my murderer. To respect the law in the context in which the American Negro finds himself is simply to surrender his self-respect." My first question to the panelists, and I will start with you, Reverend Tony Lee, is in this current age, this was written in 1966, and many know that James Baldwin was very adamant and very outspoken on police brutality and neighborhoods and community. Do you feel that in this time, we are sitting on a powder keg that has blown up?
Thank you so much, Ebony, and thank you just for the wonderful work you're gonna be doing and assisting this conversation and helping us along our journey. I would say that it's not just a powder keg, so you could call it a powder keg, but I think you can also call it a chemical reaction. There are some chemicals that you know if you put certain chemicals together, they're gonna explode. If you put certain conditions together, you know that they're gonna explode. And I believe that we have certain conditions that have been in place that have, I hate to say powder keg, because a powder keg only explodes once, but what we are watching is kind of a continued process. But also, what we're watching is that it's been an explosion, there's been a fire, but now folks are starting to see what's already been happening. And so I think that's what you're starting to see. So all over the nation, I think that you're starting to see responses to what's kind of already been there, the tensions that have already been there, the challenges that have already been there. But I also think that there are certain spaces in the nation in which you're also seeing some of the successes that happen as a result of addressing the issues and helping there to be a change and helping the situation to be shifted.
And I want to go down the line and ask the rest of our panelists the same question. How would you really describe this present state that we're in?
I would say that I have to agree with Pastor Lee. We are at a more critical level, but more of a greater conscious level, and a lot of that is coming because of the use of media. The use of, the lady can just video her husband, her boyfriend getting shot, like, right now. I mean, that's like, our grandparents would turn over in their graves if they saw something like this, the level of media and the way that things are really in your face, like, right now. So I think, yes, it's always been there, it's just now, if you do it, we're gonna know about it. And I think that's, so that's a given. You use a powder keg, whatever metaphor you want to use, and it's critical, absolutely.
Thank you. I agree with my brothers here, but of course, I speak more from an outside perspective, because I'm not a resident, I'm not an American citizen. You know, I live in South Africa, Johannesburg. But it seems as though, you know, what they've said is, this keeps happening over, you know, the past five decades or so. You know, before you had, you know, Malcolm X and the Muslim Brotherhood, you had Martin Luther King, you had the Black Panther, and today you have Black Lives Matter. So it seems though, you know, every time there's a sort of a breaking point, a tipping point, and then there's a new wave of, you know, our African people coming together to fight, you know, some of these atrocities that are taking place. And of course, you know, people, it's very worrying that, you know, as it comes in waves, you know, it sort of comes up, and then it sort of dies down again, and then it, you know, resurrects every time there's something that's really traumatic that happens to our community here in America. And so it's vital that people, I think, continue to come together. You know, I mean, I know that not everybody in America necessarily is a supporter of Black Lives Matter, but we need to make sure that African people across the continent really are working together in solidarity, in unity, as much as possible, on a continuous level, and make it much broader than one particular movement, and make it really about the civic involvement of young people and everybody as a community, not just, you know, activists, but making sure that your influential people in today's society, your sportspeople, your musicians, your actors, et cetera, are also part of these movements. I think that's the only way we'll be able to really, you know, have a sustainable movement that can encapsulate everybody.
Good afternoon. I'm not a psychiatrist. I'm an internist. I treat high blood pressure, diabetes, chronic diseases. I trained at Howard University, but I went back three years ago in the Department of Behavioral Health and Psychiatry, because it's very obvious that what happens above the neck affects the rest of the body. So we notice that people who are under stress, who have mental health problems, substance abuse problems, et cetera, die 20 to 25 years sooner. But the system that we're looking at is not new. This system was in place from the slave ships all the way, it never went away. If you can imagine someone on a slave ship, you got hundreds of folks on a slave ship and a small crew, you have to have a mechanism to control those individuals. So you have the minority that's running the ship and the majority that's on the ship. So if you go back or go down to Williamsburg, most of the time in Williamsburg, African-American slaves were the majority, not the minority. So there had to be a system in place to control that, and that system was always through psychological intimidation. And that psychological intimidation hasn't gone away. So the images we're seeing, from my perspective, on TV are there for a purpose, and they're serving the purpose that they were designed for. This country is moving towards a majority-minority population, and how do you maintain control in that circumstance? You have to continue to control by intimidation. So those images, when we see this police violence and the police repeatedly get off, it's to send you a message, and the message is very clear. The message is that you're helpless, that you can't do anything about it. And so that is to then demoralize you, and eventually, through that demoralization, you realize, well, I can't go out and do anything outside of the community, so I'm gonna, you internalize it, and you begin to do it. You know, it's like the man that lost his job and comes home and kicks the dog. That's what we're seeing. So we're internalizing forces that have never gone away. You know, they seem to ebb and flow, but the underlying current is always there.
Before we continue, I do want to recognize somebody very special in the room. Who here is a DC native? What? Okay. All right, well, I grew up in northeast DC, and you don't even have to be from DC to know this man, but I do want to acknowledge Rufus Catfish Mayfield. Stand up for me, please. He is a longtime civil rights activist in the DC area. And those of us from DC love Marion Barry, and he is one of the men who is responsible for a lot of the work that he did in this community. So thank you, and I hope that you can help when we come to the questions, kind of participate in the dialogue, because there's so much that you have to offer, because you saw what happened in DC during the riots, and you helped restore this city. So I just want to thank you for being here. I want to pick back up on what you were saying about the condition that it's left, what we're seeing in the images. How many people can remember how they felt, and it wasn't that long ago, when they saw Philando Castile in that car? I do want a participation when they saw that. How many, and this is more rhetorical, how many times do you relive that on a day-to-day basis? Do you replay that scene in your mind? Do you think about that when you're in a car? Do you think about that? How many do that continuously, these incidents, when you step out? Do you find yourself more and more, when you go out the house, reliving and thinking about these situations? Many of you here. I want to ask you, there have been many reports that have said what African-American men are going and what African-Americans are going through in the communities is like PTSD. And I want to talk on where we are emotionally as a community, and how do we come out of this state?
Again, I think you're absolutely right. When they had the flare-up in Baltimore last year, you notice that the terminology is riot, et cetera. I gave a grand rounds at Howard last year shortly after that, and when they showed the crowd, I put on the slide that this is, what we're looking at is post-traumatic stress disorder. It's always been there. The rage has always been there. The problem is that the media and these images have taught us and conditioned us to turn that on ourselves. There was an article in the Washington Post, front page, a week and a half ago, Sunday newspaper, and they showed people, when I say people, others moving from Los Angeles and other cities up to Idaho, up in the mountains, and they showed them with these AK-47s, and they called it a fortress mentality. So they're people, you might call them the militia-minded folks, but they're people who are actually storing up food and moving up in the mountains and getting ready for what they consider to be a radical change in this country. And they're the same people that don't consider the president to be a citizen, and they're running from different things. Some say they're running from ISO, some say they're running from blacks, some say they're running from Hispanics, but they are preparing themselves for what they perceive to be a drastic change in this country. So they see the enemy as the other, whereas in our mindset, we see the enemy as ourselves. And so whether or not that dynamic is gonna change over time, but right now, they focus on the other. When I first came to Washington in the 60s, it was the height of the civil rights movement. On the campus of Howard University, there were people like H. Rap Brown, Smokin' Carmichael, Marion Barry came to town, and our focus was on the other. That's changed. Even the music was, you know, we were listening to the last poets to Gil Scott-Heron. You know, we had a different focus, the Black Panthers. We had the focus on the others. Somehow, the media has turned that focus on us, so we look at ourselves as the enemy.
And a lot of this is generational distrust of police, and you kind of mentioned that, and I want to ask the other panelists, how do we begin to stop this generational distrust of police? Ndaba, I'll start with you.
Well, you say that generational distrust of the police, well, it's very difficult if our people are not being represented correctly by the community leaders and the counselors that we elect, and especially when every day, every week, there's a new killing, there's a new, you know, brutality being committed on the minority people. So for me, it's very important that people are not only coming together to vote on a national vote, but get involved as much as they can in their civic duties, on their civic rights, electing their community leaders, their judges, et cetera. And for me, that's one of the ways in which that can end, you know. A lot of the time, I believe people don't even have the information to know that in a particular day, a particular week, you have to go and vote for your community leader or for the counselor, or whatever the case may be. And so it's important that our people have the information, because, I mean, we're in a knowledge-based society, and information is power. And so if our people don't have the information, it's gonna be very difficult for them to be able to make the right decisions to represent their communities.
Darryl, you mentor a lot in the community with a lot of young boys. What are some of the issues that you're seeing that could be at root cause?
Well, in my opinion, there's a lot of external issues that we live with. I was born in 1960, and my parents got divorced right at the end of 1969, and my dad didn't have a dad, so he used alcohol as a coping mechanism. He told us that and did the best he could do. I love him for that. But ultimately, when they got divorced, a couple brothers dropped out of school, sister got pregnant, you know, things happened that was unleashed because of the strong man not being there. So I have spent most of my life not looking at the exterior issues of a policeman, white, black, or whatever. I've looked at more internally how I can make a change in my family. So I'm faithfully married, 31 years, raise a solid group of kids, doing the same thing. I would just encourage, as we talk about becoming the, what is it, becoming the change, this is exactly the life I tried to live. My dad, they got divorced when I was, they came to, J.J. Rhodes, my mom came to that elementary school, and about four of the kids were in the car, like, where y'all going? Somebody screamed out of the car, we're leaving, Dad. At 10 years old, I said, I'm gonna be a faithful, solid, I'm gonna be the best husband and dad you can be ever. Not because I hated my dad or mom, I just began to think about being the change agent right then, and then I've done it. 56 years old, 56 years later, 46 years later. So I would say, from an internal standpoint, as the people out here will go and live their lives or share it with other people, it's an issue to turn inward and look at yourself. I don't know when that situation may happen for you, if it may happen, and maybe it has never happened to any of us. I don't remember seeing any of you on TV, on the radio, whether some situation happened to you, but I would encourage you to be willing to talk to yourself. I had a conversation with a cigarette at 11, and I never smoked. I had a conversation about drinking, and I never drank. I had a conversation about, do I want to change the psychological state of my mind? And I decided, no, I don't. All the friends were saying that, man, to get high is this, or to get high is that, and I thought, well, I kind of like how I feel right now. And so other than having anesthesia or something when I got an operation, I've never been out of this mind, and I like this mind. And so I've seen in my family people who have gotten out of that mind, and I don't know how connected that is to the man, but for me, I made a decision, and I want to see that this next- And I want to see that this next, as we call it, millennial group begin to talk to themselves. When we was a kid, we were kids, they, they would call you chicken. They would say you are, you're scary, you're, you're sissy, you're whatever. Well, be willing to be called that. As a grown man in the locker room, because I didn't club and chase and run women, I was talked about as a grown man. Be willing to be the chicken, the scary cat. Be willing to look internally so that we can do what we say we're doing. And I don't want this panel to spend all of our day highlighting what you already know. But hopefully, we'll give you something of value from our own life, because we're from some age to some age, we've got a few years up here, a few years of experience, and we have some history. I have a history of having a child out of wedlock, getting my life together, and being with a woman now for 31 faithful years. Raising a boy who never slept with a girl until he got married, from a grandfather who we never knew. That's just four generations. Educated. And so that's internally looking. And I want to see us, as we finish today, even as we document our highlight past, but that you leave here with something saying, you know what, we can do better regardless of the environment we're in, and we need to participate in the environment, as you mentioned, youth work, all that we all do, voting, we know all that stuff. But let's start with the man in the mirror.
Thank you.
So now, Ebony, you asked about the generational piece around policing, and I think it could be helpful. A good example could be even what happened in Prince George's County. So Prince George's County, at the beginning of, the end of the 1900s, early 2000s, was under federal investigation. The Justice Department had to come and investigate Prince George's County policing, because the police department had a history of abuse against especially African-Americans. You remember that Prince George's County used to be an all-white community, but then you saw a migration, you saw a demographic shift out of the DC area. And so my family, I was born in southeast DC, but was a part of that early migration in which we moved to Prince George's County. So all of my, we moved out when I was about seven, eight. All of my time in Prince George's County, what I knew of the police department was that they will take you somewhere, beat you to, beat you and leave you out there in the middle of nowhere. That's what I knew of Prince George's County Police. And so, over the generations, you had this issue around Prince George's County, in which then when the feds came in, they actually showed that Prince George's County's police department was just horrific. I mean, to the point where they had to dismantle the whole, the, the dog unit would chase you. They wouldn't let the dog chase you. They would chase you, catch you, and then let the dog loose on you and let the dog bite on you. I, I think they just didn't want the dog to have to get tired chasing you. But they would then sic the dog. And, and so, and so what happened was, early 2000s, Prince George's County's police department was under federal oversight. In many of the same ways in which, if you look at the reports in Baltimore right now, about the Baltimore Police Department, the reports in Ferguson, right here outside of DC, Prince George's Police Department had the same kind of piece. What we learned, though, was that it wasn't just about making the police department become more black. Because what happens is, when you become a part of the culture, you still become blue. It wasn't even just about having in-service trainings. But there was a need to be able to deal, not just with the police department, but you had to deal with some of the other structures. So you had to deal with the county exec. You had to deal with other state's attorney. Because if you have a county exec that whenever a police officer shoots someone, immediately is stepping to back up the officers, then what you have is you have the systems in place to collaborate with the bad acting. So you had to get new leadership in the police department, new leadership in the county exec seat, new leadership in the state's attorney. Because if you don't have a state's attorney that's actually going to try to prosecute and actually try to get indictments, then you have this challenge and you have this system that is dysfunctional. And so what happened in Prince George's County was that you saw that we had to literally just revamp the whole, all the leadership, had to get new leaders in place. And so, and some of the places that we're at, that we have to make sure to be able to look at the people, you had to deal with the judicial system, the judges. And so you have to make sure that you are looking at, who are the people in these places of authority institutionally, if you're going to deal with the generational stuff? Because you can't deal with the generational stuff if you still have things in place to let it keep going. One. So first, you have to do that. Second, then, you have to shape a community policing strategy that is shaped in such a way that it is now understood in community, that the community can feel the police, they can deal with police, and understand the police are actually going to be held accountable to the same rules that they're held accountable to in their communities. And that takes time and that takes relationship. And so something we did over the last decade, and even a half when I was in another church, is that we were making sure that the police were having to be involved with people in community when it was not adversarial. If the only, if the only time that citizens and police come into contact is when it's a problem, then that's a problem. But you need folks to come into contact with each other, because if not, the police will only see people at their worst. They'll only see them in times in which it's their most challenging. And so then what you have is, you have all this implicit bias, all the stereotypes around communities. And police then will treat people as if they're, not as a community that they are there to take care of and protect, but they'll treat people in a militaristic fashion. And so there's a need to be able to shape the kind of community involvement in which police and community are navigating and dealing with each other regularly. The third thing is, police have to go to jail.
Yes.
If they do wrong, they got to go to jail. And it has to be seen. And so one of the blessings, most recently, last year, when you had the situation in which it came out that there was going to be no indictments in Ferguson, I called the chief of police and said, "Come to church this Sunday." He regularly comes, and so it's not somebody's brand new. I said, "I need you to stand with me, because I need what's happening at the federal level and what's happening nationally to not tear up all the good work we've been working on in this region." I said, "Now, we know that your police department isn't perfect, but at least we know that you are trying to get it in order, and I don't want it to tear up all of our good work." And so we had to show that a month before, that two police officers had just gotten, not just charged, but had just gotten sent to jail for years and years because of what they had done. And those cases were brought to the state's attorney by the chief of police. And when the judgments came down, the state's attorney was standing up saying, "This is the amount of jail time they've got." But the chief of police was standing next to her, saying that we will not tolerate bad actors in our police department, and they will be held to a higher level of scrutiny and a higher level of accountability. And that's how you deal with generational stuff. People have to see that things are changing. Now, still, you're still, I'm still nervous when the police in Prince George's County pulled me over, and they gave me a badge and made me honorary police. And I'm still scared, because I've had guns put to my head by police in Prince George's County years before. But I now know that at least we're moving in a different direction. And at least I have a sense that there are fair actors in play. And so therefore, that can at least help in the movement away from this kind of generational understandings of a police department.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for that. I want to play a Sydney clip from Chief Charles Ramsey, who actually used to serve in DC as well, but he's now in Philadelphia. And he talks about mending broken trust with police in the communities. And what he said was very powerful. See if we can get this playing. Damn it.
Because I was being accompanied by an actual and collaborative.
Sorry.
What is the role of police in a democratic society? If you ask the average police officer what their role is, most of them would say to enforce the laws. Yet that is a very, very narrow part of what we do as police. How many of them do you think would actually say that their role is to defend the constitutional rights of all people? If we had police in this country, believe it and conduct themselves in a manner consistent with that, would we be having the problems we're having today? I don't think so. So by taking that walk through history, because we've already tried doing the so-called sensitivity training, something that I absolutely hate that term, is it implies that you're insensitive or you go in there with the, with the presumption that, you know, that white cops are all racist and blah, blah, blah. People shut down, they don't want to hear that kind of stuff. But it's a backdoor approach toward getting at many of the legitimate issues that confront us today. One of the photographs, for an example, is a soldier and a police officer going through a Jewish man, and the first thing it reminded me of was stop and frisk. I mean, the lessons go on and on, and I'm not trying to say police are Nazis or police are involved in that sort of thing. But it's about the Constitution, it's about protecting people's rights. And that's the message we try to get through to people as part of this training that we're doing at the National Constitution Center. The other thing that I think is important, that kind of got us to where we are today, are quite frankly, the policing strategies that we've used. I saw an earlier presentation when he talked about the 80s and the 90s. I went through that, when crime was soaring through the roof. And I'm telling you, there was an awful lot of pressure from, pressure from political leadership and also from communities. Get a handle on crime. We were just beginning to engage in something called community-oriented policing, which would bring police and community closer together, engage in collaborative problem-solving and all these kinds of things. And was it good? Yeah, absolutely. It built much better relationships in many of our communities. But it was a little slow in terms of actually being able to see that reduction in crime. And let's face it, at the end of the year, when you pick up the newspaper, or if you turn on television and they're talking about crime in Philly, Baltimore, or anywhere else, what are they showing? One stat and one stat only. How many murders did you have? If your murders are up, crime's out of control. Murders are down, fantastic, great job. I can have my job another year, probably. But is that really the barometer that we ought to be using to determine safe and secure neighborhoods? I would argue that it's really not. People want more than that. So we went from community-oriented policing, and then we all started looking at New York City, where they went into something called CompStat, which is a data-driven approach to dealing with crime. And they had dramatic, dramatic reductions in crime. So everyone started saying, how come you aren't doing what they're doing there? So across America, we all started getting the information systems, we all started looking at dots on the map, we all started looking at our deployments and how we're putting cops in the areas where we have the most crime and so forth. And then we all started to see drops in crime. I mean, we are at the lowest level of crime in this country, in most cities, since the late 1950s and 19, and early 1960s. That's pretty dramatic, folks, pretty traumatic. But here's the problem. We didn't think about the collateral damage we were causing in many of these communities by some of the aggressive policing tactics. We also, I think, misunderstood what people really want. Sure, they want safe and secure neighborhoods, but they don't measure success solely by the absence of crime. They also want to see the presence of justice in communities. We miss that.
I'm going to stop it right there. And I thought that was so strong, when he talked about having the presence of justice in our communities. And we kind of talked about civic participation a little while ago, but where do we go, where do we go from here? And I want to talk to our panelists. What individual responsibility do we have in our own communities? Because while we talk about the role of the police, we also have to talk about our own individual roles, our families. I talked to Darrell Green earlier in the week, and we were talking about the role, how important the role, the role that family plays in our communities in helping to solve some of these problems. But there's also some individual things that we, that we need to do. And I want to go down the line and talk about what, what it is that we can start doing.
Yeah. And I think that's really where we need to focus, because the change that we want is going to have to come from us. Just to give you an example, in my practice, I treat drug addiction. It's not something that's sexy, it's not something that a lot of, I can't even talk to some of my colleagues about, you know, why do you treat those people? But I look at it as a form of detoxification of the community. Unless we can control substance abuse, help with mental health issues in our community, then nothing else flows the way it should. People don't want to walk to the grocery store if they have to walk past certain things. So, so I, I consider that part of my job, and, and, and I embrace that, that part of the job. But it doesn't stop there. What we did was, because we're looking at health disparities across the board, and I'm kind of tired, you know, of beating that dead horse. We know it's there, we know we have higher rates of diabetes, hypertension, obesity, you name it. What can we do about it? What should we do about it? So what we did was, take this project with substance abuse, and we went back to the churches. And we said, if they're not doctors proportionately in our community, psychiatrists, social workers proportionately in our community, we, we need to put them there. And where can we go, where's the safest place that we can go to start that? And that entity, we have, we have plenty of churches in our community. And you look at those churches, they got a lot of space. And that space is not used 100% of the time. So we can put our own health facilities in the, in the churches. But it does not stop there, in the sense that, once you enter that community and begin to know the people in that community, then you have an opportunity to look for the next Darrell Green, who may be in a situation where he's being raised by a single parent. Look at Simone Bows, the Olympic champion. She was in a situation where her parents were gone. Her grandfather raised her. So when I look at the demographics, and I can show you a slide, only 20, 28% of children in our communities right now are being raised by two parents. 24% where both parents are working, 20% are being raised by grandparents. Now, that's a scary situation, because in my practice, I have 60-year-olds with six-year-olds. So when that 60-year-old becomes 66, that six-year-old is going to be 12. And, 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 and that 60-year-old has arthritis, heart condition, pacemaker. It's hard physically, economically, and emotionally for that 66-year-old to keep up with that 12-year-old. But if I put that clinic in the church and I recognize that situation, then we can begin to build a, a community around what we know is going to happen if we don't intervene. And so, so those mentors that we're talking about will recognize as a community, the social workers, nurses, et cetera, will be able to recognize and, and find those diamonds in the rough and not let them grow up without support. So, you know, that's just in a nutshell, my vision and where I'm headed.
And Dabba, talk about the work that you do with Africa Rising Foundation, that we can incorporate here.
So the work that I do with the Africa Rising Foundation is mainly around youth empowerment. You know, in our village in Onu, you know, the kids finish high school without even touching computers. So for us, as an organization that's geared towards creating a new breed of African leaders, we understand the importance that technology plays as a tool in order for us to reach our solutions. So we're more focused on youth development and making sure that our kids have access to computers. We also, you know, judge on, I mean, drum on entrepreneurship, the spirit entrepreneurship, and just really youth empowerment and engaging with the youth and understanding what it is that they need and how we can help facilitate or provide some of those things. But it's really about teaching people how to fish and not giving them the fish. So as far as the police are concerned, I would also say that it is important for us to appeal to the human side of policemen. You know, police are not drones, they're not machines. They are human beings at the end of the day. So how can we appeal to their humanity, you know, and, and get rid of the fear that exists? Because I believe there's this fear from the police side, and there's also fear from, from, from the community side of things. So how can we engage the police so that everybody gets to know that we're human beings? You know, when you have a birthday celebration, we need to have occasions where we engage with the police. And the police can bring their families to a church, to a birthday celebration, to a sports event. And the police can bring their families to a church, to a birthday celebration, to a sports event. You know, because police also have children and wives, just as the community are. And if we can create occasions whereby, you know, the police can engage, and then we can really just remove the uniform and all these sort of things that the system obviously imposes on people, and just appeal to the human side, I think there'll be a lot more distrust that exists. Hey, my name is John Brown, I'm living here in this community. Here's my wife, I got two kids, my adopted daughter, oh, and that was my first baby mama. You know, and he will come across as well and share, you know, his family. And so that when you do meet on the street, it's not always meeting the police with fear. Oh, have I done something wrong? I'm being pulled over. Oh, no, how you doing, sir? How's your day going? Can I escort you to your next place? Hey, how you feeling? You're coming from a nightclub. Oh, no, I'm feeling a bit, you know, can I escort you? Can I help you? You know, follow my lights if I'm driving, whatever the case may be. You know, I think it is very important for us to really appeal to the police, to their humanity, and understand that at the end of the day, we're all human beings. And we can get rid of that, the fear and, you know, the blocks that exist between the community and the police. I think that will do some good and go a long way.
You know, I really appreciate that. I really appreciate you all being here today. I appreciate Dr. Brown, Dr. Anderson putting this together. And she's sort of like my play baby sister, and she always makes me do stuff, but this time I like it. Thank you as well, Ebony. You know, and listened to Pastor here earlier and my man here from the motherland. You know, I was thinking about, when I was a kid in the 60s and 70s, when we saw the police coming down the street, we ran. That's not made up, we just ran, we just ran.
Still run.
Even though playing basketball, not doing anything.
I still run.
And I remember my brother, you know, they had a roadblock, kind of they checking cars. And we lived in a dead end, where it was a dead end, but you could go left or right, but if you kept straight, you'd run right into our house. So he, down the street, he went right through it. He had something bad on him. He went right through it, and when he made that turn on two wheels, that's where they grabbed him, right in front of our house. And I remember the police telling my mom, go ahead and down, go ahead, go ahead of us downtown, because they were going to work this dude over. And they did, at some point, not because she followed them down there. And I remember going home one day, I was, you know, I've been living here over 33 years. I went home and police was looking for my brother, and they knocked on the door, and I was standing there like, you know, it was dark, and then boom, he kicked the door in. And when he kicked it in, the gun was right in my face. But I never really, you asked the question, how many of us have thought about what we've seen? I guess in football, I had to forget plays. So I don't remember, I don't have stuff with me. I think it hurts you from moving forward sometime. And I'm not saying that's you're the bad, I'm just saying, I just remembered this stuff sitting right here, but I never thought about it. I never thought about it, because I've always been a forward-looker. I've always felt like we've got to move forward. And in that, you talk about my youth work. A lot of young African-American boys in my centers, they're only male interaction. No offense to the role, but it may be just the janitor at the school, because they live with their mom and their grandmom and their aunt. And there's no men around except maybe the other brother down on the corner. So again, I come back to, we have to look at ourselves and help our kids. And this thing as related to the police, as related to academics, all those things surround us as a part of our responsibility to manage. As I manage my children, we sat around the kitchen, we talked about everything. But we always had a baseline, a baseline for us. If we're going to be, we call it the Green Constitution. Hey, get as much education as you can, if you can. If you couldn't, my daughter dropped out of college, we didn't go crazy. If you make as much money as you can, if you can. But one, we said, we will be uncompromised, we will be a godly people, starting with me. I'll be faithful to y'all, Mom, we're going to live this way, X, Y, Z. So let's make sure that we do, as you mentioned, and I appreciate that, all that engagement, because we didn't have it. We ran from the police. Nobody ever brought us together and saw Officer Friendly, we never saw him. And so, you know, Andy Griffin was the only policeman we saw, and it didn't help, we still ran. So, but I just want us to understand the bigger picture for where you will take people and where you will go as we move forward in our lives. Because there are things that will never, we may not live to see them go away, but we still got to operate in them. And there are some people that just love to talk about junk. They just, they ain't never heard a junk story that they didn't love. And I find, as they tried to do with me in football, I started football in 11th grade, because all they told me was I couldn't play and I was too little. That's all they wanted to say. They just, you can't play and you too little, you can't play and you... What? MP, I'm killing y'all. Finally, I went out with football. But I mean, sometimes you can just, that's the whole thing.
Right, right.
I finally said, I want to go play. And I played 20 years in NFL.
All right.
Went to the Hall of Fame. So I just wanted to say, and don't clap for that, but I'm just saying, let's make sure, because this whole idea of becoming the change that you want to see, we're not saying we need to do that. We didn't, this subject wasn't change them, it was change us. And I like that. So I don't want to keep, it's not, we need offense and defense, and special teams, which the Redskins didn't have this week.
Wait, 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 back up.
But anyway, anyway, they play the Cowboys this week, hopefully we will have it. But anyway, I just want to say that, that we just, this is very good. I sure hope that the people out here are listening and that we can have an effect when we go back home, but it will start with the individual in the mirror.
Thank you so much. Reverend Lee, I want you to, before we wrap, and then take it to the audience for questions. Two things, one, with the topic being the change that we want to see, I do want you to give us one step, one thing that we can do, leaving today, to help create that change. And number two, I didn't ask early, but meant to, what place do you see organizations like Black Lives Matter playing in a part of this narration?
Okay, first, I do need to say I feel convicted sitting next to Brother Green, because I'm a Steelers fan, and he just reminded me of last week.
Y'all respect the house, though, because this is not Steelers playing.
No, but with me having said that, I took, hold on, I took a selfie with him, sent it to my mama. And my mama already, my mother and father already sent me something back, a text already back, that said, tell him we need him back, tell him we need him back. So I just want to let you know, they're trying to recruit you back, brother, they're trying to recruit you back. They're trying to recruit you. So I think, and if I can lay both kinds of tracks of what you're saying about the roles of, say, some of the organizations like a Black Lives Matter, et cetera, et cetera, as well as steps we can do to allow ourselves to be the change we want to see. So I think that organizations sometimes can call us to being the change we want to see. And so I think that there are times, so, say, a Black Lives Matter, or any range of the BYP 100, you know, any range of folks that are out there, really on the ground, that are talking about and unmasking and showing us some of the steps it can take to deal with the institutional stuff. I think they also challenge us to become better as individuals. And I think that if we look at our individual transformation outside of the context of also some of the other stuff, then we can miss our fully, our full actualization of ourselves. And what I mean by that is, if you look at Dr. King, Dr. King said, if you're going to be a street sweeper, be the best street sweeper, you see what I'm saying? That wherever you are, be the best at what you are and fully actualize who you are. And so at our church, we talked about how you're transformed to be agents of transformation, that you are changed to become an agent of change. So as we become the change we want to be, it also, though, will allow us to impact change in other areas in other ways. So we are changed, we have our individual transformation, but it also allows us to have an impact around some of the things around us. Because we do know this, and especially if we're looking at our community and our people and those kinds of pieces, we do know that just looking at, just looking at some of the stats, the stats will show that if people are in a substandard educational system, that there are just certain things, that people build jails off of reading scores. And if folks don't know how to read by a certain age range, then they're literally projecting jails by reading scores.
Third grade.
By third grade reading scores. So we understand that a part of what we can do is what? Help young people learn how to read, right? And if we help them learn how to read, then it can also help impact this larger issue. But a piece of helping them learn how to read, while some of it can just be our tutoring programs, at some point, we've got to deal with the educational system. Because most of our young people are going through the educational system, and as good as we can do on individual levels in the impacting individual young people, if we're really going to have the kind of impact we want to have, then we have to impact the system. So what we learned in Prince George's County, and I keep going back there just because I think it's a good example of a police department, a system that was really broken, that was federally shown to be broken. What we realized is, even from policing, you have to look at policing different. In this nation, we look at, if you're going to impact policing, we have to look at government differently, and we have to deal with poverty. And so what happens now, if you look at Chief Ramsey's piece, he said, we would do CompStat. We would look at the areas that had the most crime, and then we would put the police officers in those areas, and that would be called hotspot initiatives. And DC and the DMV is famous for it, that, you know, when the crime or homicides would pop up, then they would have these summer hotspot initiatives. And so they would focus the police on the areas in which the crime was happening. What the county exec, what Resheren Baker did that was different in Prince George's County, is they said, we have to look at government different, we have to look at how to utilize the resources of government. And instead of saying we put all the police in that area, let's look at how to put the services in the area to help deal with the issues that are causing people to do a lot of stuff. So let us put social services, let's look at the families that are having a challenge, let's look at the broken families, let us look at the, and let us put a program like Brother Green's program there. And so what they did was, they utilized not just social services, they utilized the nonprofit community, the faith community, and they said, we're going to focus in this area. And these areas where we're having challenges, focus in these areas while also having the police there as well, because some people need to get locked up, that's real, right? Some people, some people need to get locked up. But there needs to be a fair, balanced thing, that if the police do wrong, they get locked up too. But let us be able to look at, how do I, when I grow, then utilize what I've learned to then impact things so that my brother can grow? And what you saw, say, with Brother Green, Brother Mandela, is that what you've seen is they've shaped programs that, as they've grown, they said, I can't just have this growth for me. But I now have platform, I'm a Hall of Famer, right? I got rings that show that I'm a bad boy on the football field, right? So let me use my platform and my resources and other people who will partner with me to then shape something so I can impact this group of young people. As I impact them, then what will happen? Hopefully, as they grow and are impacted, maybe one, two, three of them will come back to a community and try to do what they saw me do. And so how do we do it? We make sure that it doesn't stop with us, that we become the change we want to see. But as we become the change we want to see, that we pass it down. And as we pass it down, in whatever way we pass it down, some of us will pass it down at the institutional level, because that's where we're good. Some of us will pass it down at a grassroots level, because that's where we're good. Some of us will pass it down in our family, and just make sure our family is the best family, and I'm the best father and best husband that I can be. But whatever we do, we have to make sure that we intentionally are not just becoming individually the change, but we're passing it down to our family, to our community, and to our reach.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Let's give our panel a round of applause. I just want to thank everybody for the words of inspiration, the realness that you all gave us today. And I really hope our audience takes what they hear, go back to their communities, and create change in their communities. I want to open up now to those who are here. If anyone has any questions they would love to ask our panel, we have a mic right here at the center, just come and line up. Is it turned on the right? I'm sorry. And I will say this before we start, because we have about 45 minutes, so I want to make sure that we keep the questions brief, and we'll keep our answers brief so we can keep rolling. Go ahead, and say your name.
Just so you know, it's more of a testimony statement and thank you.
Go ahead.
Quickly. My name is Marquita Price, I'm from Oakland, California. I'm here on behalf of my Parata district, I'm a student trustee. And so I'm from East Oakland, deep East Oakland, California, and it's very much similar to the climate of where you guys, where you two mentioned. And so I just wanted to thank you guys for your words. I came in here already, I'm here because I want to better make that change and reflect it. And so I just really take appreciation for what you all said, and I just wanted you to know that. And also just wanted to share my testimony of, it really works. When you change, when you do stuff to yourself, whether it's consciously or subconsciously and you're doing it, people really do see it. I thought that, I have a big mouth, I get passionate, I ramble, I do all this stuff, so I'm not received as well as I would like to be. So I notice when I just do, do it, they receive that more. And I didn't think that I was as, that my actions was taken as much as they were until people started really coming up to me, kind of telling me how it was. And so one thing we just did in Oakland was an Oakland cleanup. I just saw it on my Instagram on a Saturday, called a few of my homies that's in the student government or just around the area, and like, man, let's go to this cleanup. It's a Saturday from like 12 to 5, where you can be doing anything on a nice, nice day. And we came and went out there, and this family's out there, it's all kinds of just random people dedicating their Saturday to do it, people stopping by, hunking and acting, saying thank you. And it was just like, man, you really do got to be that change you want to see. And so one of the people that I went with, their daughter was like, what you offing to do? We finna go clean up Oakland, East Oakland. She was like, word, I'm gonna stop littering. And that like run my heart. I was like, are you serious? I hate litters, my partners know, you can't litter in my car, you would get thrown out with it. And so, for real, so just that reflective, I just wanted just a testimony to show that whether you know it or not, people are watching and they see. So if we can more consciously, because I've been doing it subconsciously, a little more consciously, but if we can like really more, amp it up a little bit more consciously to try to do what we're all saying to do here, we will be surprised on how much it can actually change.
Thank you so much. And that goes to the, deals with the point of respect. Respecting our own communities and cleaning up our own communities and demanding that same respect from others who enter our community, from leaders on down. Go ahead, ma'am.
Yes, I would first like to thank the panelists for being here today. And the topic was right on time, being the changes you want to see. My name is Lakeisha Davis Small, and I'm from the Historical Shore community. And I just wanted to tell you. And in 1989, I was 10 years old, and PBS Frontline did a story on my community called Throw Away People. You can Google it now, and you'll see me at 10 years old talking about the neighborhood, the crime and the drugs. And they interviewed me and my dad, because he was a single father raising a little girl. That was change one, because you never see men raising girls by themselves. And he wasn't on drugs, he didn't do any, you know, of those things. He raised me, you know, he's a street vendor, he didn't want to work for anybody. So he sold earrings, body oil, scarves.
That's all right, he made it happen.
Yes, he made it happen. But PBS felt that we were not worth anything, that we wouldn't be anything because of the crime in our neighborhood. And my dad raised me very well, he passed away on Martin Luther King's birthday this year. But he raised me, and we were in each other's life forever. And my thing was, God allowed people to see what change happened in my life, living in that community, and what society said about me was not true. I've been working for the Federal Aviation Administration for 20 years. I just came off of a detail in the Office of Civil Rights as an EEO counselor and a mediator. So I'm like, look at God, like you can't label people and say, this is what they're going to be, because God will tell you something different. So God also allowed me to write my autobiography, Call Your Deliverance Is Coming, in which I talk about my struggles, my hardships. But I want to be the change that young people see. You know, I want to be the one who lets you know that faith is believing in something you've never seen, but it's possible if you have faith, if you believe in a God that you've never seen, believed that he could do anything, just like we sit in these chairs. We feel like, oh, this chair will hold me up. You have faith in a chair, you have to have faith in God. So thank you, I just wanted to share that.
Thank you so much, that was so powerful. What's the name of the... What's the name of the book again?
Your Deliverance is Coming.
Okay, let's support. It's, but it's all about, it's all about support, and so I want to make sure that we support each other. Absolutely. Go ahead.
That's tough to follow, but I'll try my best. My name is Juba Santi, I'm a board member for the Black Caucus of the Young Democrats of America, and I'm from the Bronx, New York. And my question is, what are your, what's the panel's thoughts on police brutality victims whose families receive monetary settlements from their cities? And what, do you think that that affects the, the verdict and outcome of whether or not police officers are convicted in those cases?
I'm going to introduce one of our panelists who just joined us, I'm so glad you still came out. This is Brandon Anderson, please give him a round of applause. He's a public speaker, inventor, and entrepreneur in Washington DC. So, I'm going to finish, the panelists can answer that question, but I wanted to make sure we get you in here too, and I'm going to have some questions for you as well. Anybody wanting to take that question? Reverend Lee?
So, and I actually, I think that families who are dealing with, and are victims, or their families were victims, I really, I'm very careful about telling them what they need to do, because they're victims. And I'm very careful about trying to impose on them the need to be the person who like stands up or makes this kind of a sacrifice for everybody, because it's not like, it's not like they volunteered for the role. They're dealing with a situation where they were victims, I don't know their family's circumstance. A lot of times, if you were just thinking just kind of purely from a facts and figures way, then you may want them to not get the settlement before the trial runs. But, I don't know their situation, I don't know their circumstance, and the way that things go in this nation, it could put them in a worse situation as far as the settlement, because a lot of these folks aren't getting convicted. And while I may, while in a perfect world, I, I would want things to kind of go in a different fashion, I'm really very careful about kind of trying to impose on them my judgment of what they need to do, because they're just dealing with, they're grieving as it is, and they're victims as it is. And so, I think it, I think it's a bit presumptuous for me personally, you, you all may have different opinions, but I think it's a bit presumptuous for me to kind of feel that, for me to feel I have the place to tell them or feel like I can make a judgment on what they need to do in that situation. That's just me personally.
I want to, can someone bring this mic right up here? I want to, I'm going to, just going to put you on the spot, Catfish. I want, I want you to talk to us about activism, and what you saw happen in DC as a civil rights leader, some points that you can give to our audience on how to become strong activists in your community.
You know, first of all, I'd like to say good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I was having flashbacks, you know, sitting here, and especially when Chief Ramsey came on. How I came to publics, I, a friend of mine was killed by a police officer on May the first, nineteen sixty-seven. And there's a piece at, in DC, the Smith Zoney and Andy Costa Museum, and they talk about from nineteen sixty-three to nineteen seventy-five, when my friend was killed. He was killed because I told him, it was about a twenty-nine cent box of chocolate chip cookies, and him and the police. The police was really scared of another brother, a big brother, that's the one that he was talking to. And at the time, Clarence Booker, Bug, he threw, the other fellow threw some cookies underground, he picked the cookies up, and he was messing with him, hey, fat daddy, do you want your cookies? And so, he said, I don't have no time, and he threw the cookies back down on the ground. And Bug picked up the cookies, and asked Fat Nasty, did he want the cookies? He said, I don't have no time. He did his hand like that, and Bug threw the cookies back down on the ground. Subsequently, the officer knew that he was in a situation. So, he thought that Bug, by being a smaller individual, you under arrest for throwing littering on the ground, and they got to tussling. And so, he asked me, Catfish, help me. I said, the man is not going to shoot you for a twenty-nine cent box of chocolate chip cookies. Bug let the gun go, because they were wrestling over it. And the next thing I know, that Bug ran from right here to round by where that gentleman is sitting, and they shot him in the back. And he fell under the Benny Road Bridge, and he had told the police officers that he had been shot. He was standing over and saying, nigger, move if you want. And he lifted up his shirt, but he did not see any wound. And today, I am still haunted by the look that Bug gave me sitting in that police car. And like, why didn't you help me? Well, later on, they realized that Bug had been shot. The bullet went in so cleanly, it closed up, and he died from it. Out of that movement became Marion Barry. How can we help? How can we stop this craziness? And so, Marion and I got together with an organization called Pride Incorporated, one of the best, most successful programs that was in this country. And out of that movement became the empowerment. And so, what winded up happening is that we began to put in place, later on, when Marion went on to counsel and subsequently became mayor, and I went into government. And the reason why I had a flashback when Pastor, I mean, Chief Ramsey was talking, here's where I believe that we as African Americans made a tremendous mistake. We were the Senate tree of Atlanta, Harlem, Philadelphia, DC, and Good, and Dicken, and New York. What winded up happening is that those mayors began to create the black middle class financially. They took over, and as they took over, the black middle class left the inner city. They call what they call the European model, where the rich lives in the city, and the poor live in the suburbs. And if you look at what happened to Prince George's County, is that the middle class left out, and it was a vacuum. All you had basically left is the projects, Park Morton, Potomac Gardens, Kennelwood, Barry Farms, Benning Heights. So, anytime that you siphoned off the best and brightest of any group, and leave only the marginal individuals around, why do you not suspect? Now you see a reversal. People in Prince George's County, the Washington Post did a three series on the underwater that Prince George's County finds themselves in, because blacks was looking for a house to define them. Rather than, white folks say, I am the definition of a community. So, they move into our community. So, you have the pockets of individuals with the toxicity that Dr. Chapman was talking about. We came up with two words. Rehabilitation is the word that we have always used in the past. Now, the other word is now, habilitation. And what does that mean? Although that is a word that's been used since nineteen sixty, I mean, almost nineteen eighty-something, or eighteen ninety, and it simply means, you have to build capacity in a person that the skill sets and morals and value was absent. That is the reason why it is so difficult for us right now to bring about, because you look at nothing but, like someone said, a first grade reading vocabulary, I mean, vocabulary determines a twelfth grade reading. So, but we look at the fraction and the brokenness of the family, and usually, it's a single female, eighteen to twenty-four year old, and, and what Dr. Chapman keeps talking, talking to all of us about, is that this toxicity is cascading down on them. And then there was this paradigm shift, and I wind up in entertainment, and, and I, and I, I saw it begin to happen during the hip-hop, where that the thug mentality began to permeate the streets. Our children were beginning to lose their smile. They start taking pictures like it's a, a photo, a prison picture. Everybody had to be gritted. Everybody walking around looking like, I think if you ever saw Kings of Comedy, and it says Cedric talked about white folks' hope, and black folks talk about wish. And it simply means, white folks say, they go to the theater, and they have a reserved seat, and it say, oh my God, I hope nobody's in our seats. Cedric says, I subscribe to wish.
Go on, say it.
I wish them all. We walk around looking for confrontation, until we began to build capacity. A lot of the, and I, I, I ask you to do this for me, right down on this website, it's www dot destinypride dot org. W W dot destinypride dot org. And so, what we do, and you're going to see a wheel that's on there, when soon as you see this wheel on there, it's going to say, no wrong door, no matter where, no ma- Oh, Lord.
Call you out, might as well, look.
There it is.
Hold up, let's, what's going on, they trying to shut us down?
Oh.
Hold on, I'm clicking on it. I'mma work on it.
Work on it, Bug.
Okay, I'mma work, I'mma work.
I'm a broken down comedian too.
Don't do it. Let me try to.
But, oh, and can you, a burning desire is driving force of destiny. And you see that right down here, no wrong door? No matter where you come in for our organization, what we do is do the needs assessment and determine what type of services. Sometime, our services has to be, we be doing peer support. We will become a de facto parent until we get that family up and running. Why is that so important? We, in the District of Columbia, they, the city council had to pass a law to stop them from putting three-year-olds out of preschool. Three-year-olds, because they are coming in there believing that toxicity is normal. So, our peer support, instead of calling the mother, they call our peer support, until we get that, that, that mother, in a lot of cases, it's mother, and it's a mother with an eighth grade, ninth grade. If we're going to build capacity, we have to begin to look at not the individual that is going to school. Show me a disruptive cha-, a child, nine chances out of ten, I'll show you a disruptive family. So, if we do not begin to come cascade downward, quality never percolates downward, it percolates up. And so, that's where the challenge, I think, that all of us have, is that understand that, and now what you see, as the blacks have moved out, in the vacuum now, Harlem is almost white. Atlanta, the blacks moved out, they moved in. DC, if you now look at where the pockets, you go by Trinidad, all of those pockets is where the problem is coming in. And I submit to you, guess what the police is doing on, over there in Potomac Gardens? If you go past, and if you're visiting there, please go over there. They're not going to get you, because the police is, the police is coordinating all, all of Potomac Gardens. Because, you know, white folks love to walk free at night. And if you go there at night, you will see a police officer.
Right.
On every block, protecting those white folks. Almost like a reservation. We have left most of our people back. Why are you surprised when they have no leadership? You can't take the best and brightest and leave nothing but the marginal. Our school system is reflective of that. You can determine the quality of the school just by one thing, how many kids on free
We're going to have to wrap up just a little.
I apologize.
I just want to, no, I can stay here forever, because you preaching, so let's give him a round, this is DC. This is DC. Oh, yeah, you can put it right back on, or you can hand it to me, yeah, it doesn't matter.
Mr. Mayfield, you earned your dinner.
Yeah, right, right, right. Let's give him one more round of applause, that was powerful. I love it. I want to give a chance for our audience to hear from Mr. Brandon Anderson, and the role that you're playing in the, in the community, in the work that you're doing. We've been talking about the change that we want to see, and so, what is some advice that you can give to our audience members, and what they can do when they go back into the community, or what they need to pay attention to and be more aware of?
Yeah, uh, the song, you hear me? Uh, well, first, I am incredibly apologetic for being so late, I had a hearing that ran over. Before I start any remarks, I also want to recognize the privilege that I have to be on this panel, because a lot of people we engage in the community, or that I engage in the community, often don't have the luxury of theorizing about what it means to do better. They are spending their lives surviving, and so I have a privilege to be here with you all today, and to, to talk more about what it means to thrive and be free. I also liked the story of Mr. Mayfield told. To get at the question, I think, I'll, I'll start really about what I've done in my work, and I'll be brief. I am a former US Army satellite engineer, and I paid attention in class when they used data to inform the decisions that they make on the ground. And so, my work was just basically like being T-Mobile for the US Army. And that just meant that every information bit that was being sent from rear detachment or people on the back end, that that was directly delivered to people on the front end who had the weapons and could do all the work they needed to do. And I saw the way that that information was useful. I never thought that I'd be, I'd be fighting a different war using that same technology, however. And that war is the war on police terror. While I was in the military, I got a phone call that my best friend and lifetime partner of eight years was shot by the Oklahoma City Police Department. And I never remember, I, I never forget that day, because that was the day I came out as a black queer man as well, to the US military during a time in two thousand and seven when don't ask, don't tell was exactly what you needed to do, don't ask and don't tell. And I told, because I wanted to go and see my partner of eight years, you couldn't do this if you didn't have a close family member who was, who was, you know, ill or sick, and so I chose. Subsequently, I was honorably, but nonetheless discharged from the US military because of my orientation. from the US military because of my orientation. On the plane, my partner died. And stuck in midair, one place between leaving an entity that didn't give a damn about who I was, or at least, uh, who I was entirely, and going to a place where I felt I had the most love, uh, was, was striking me. And, uh, in midair, so, uh, I lost my best friend and lifetime partner in 2007 to police violence. And that catapulted me into this work. Uh, and the work that I do is mainly, um, getting information about experiences that we have with police and, uh, using that as a means of, uh, engaging police and organizing against police terror. And so what I think some of the things that we can do, uh, are fairly simple, is that our voices need to be heard and currently they're not. How do we make those heard? Well, right now, uh, close to about 60 to 70% of police departments in this country use technology. Let me tell you what they use that technology for. They know your license number, they know your race, they know your age, they know your gender, they know where you live, they know how many parking tickets you had. They know, and they scrub oftentimes, uh, your emails even. And they have, at this point, more than 50 databases full of people like you and I, uh, who, who've either never committed a crime or have committed a crime before, it does not matter, and they use that to determine your level of threat. So when you walk up to an officer or an officer walks up to you during a pull over or a stop and frisk or what have you, any interaction, they run your name. When they used to run your plates, they run your name now, right? More than 50% of this country runs your name because they have, they have a database on you. Uh, and they use that to readily identify your level of threat. Uh, and you should know that your race often increases that level of threat. If you are a black person, uh, of any gender, your threat level has increased. And, uh, we can go into talking about why that's the case a little later, but the solution to this is that we build our own database of police officers who have performed poorly in our neighborhoods so that we can organize against police terror more effectively. And my job over the past two years has been interviewing more than 600 police officers, more than 6,000 people in the community, and talking to more than 19 mayors. And my work stems from the, uh, same work that I did in the military, using data to inform the decisions we make on the ground. And so, a solution is, uh, is something that I've been building for about a year and a half out of the backseat of my parked car, uh, which is the reason I went to a hearing because my car was towed. Uh, so, so the idea here, uh, I don't, I don't know if, if I could pull it up or anything, uh, but, uh, it's a program that basically asks you questions about your experience with police.
What's the site?
Uh, you can just go to Facebook. Uh, and it does it through artificial intelligence. Uh, it is exactly, how many people have Facebook? It's okay, Regina, cool. Uh, how many people use Facebook Messenger? Great, cool, talk to your friends, family. More than 60% of African Americans and Latinos use it to communicate with, uh, friends and family. So what we've done is we've built a bot. How many people have heard of a bot, chatbot? Cool, chatbot, can anyone tell me what a chatbot is? Yeah, basically it's, it's like, um, o- ours is, you know, an, an ordinary chatbot basically has rule-based coding, you enter a code, it responds to you, or you enter a phrase, it responds to you, right? Ours is a bit more, uh, uh, intelligent, um, I'm gonna pull it up. Ours is a bit more intelligent, can y'all hear me? Ours is a bit more intelligent. Okay, cool. So I don't have a lot of time, if I make a mistake, y'all. I don't know what's gonna come up on my Facebook now, y'all.
Right, right.
So y'all, yeah, I got some pretty radical friends, let me, let me go straight to Messenger instead, yeah. All right. Okay, all right, all right, all right. Y'all don't take no, you taking pictures, you, okay. About to get me all in trouble, let. Um.
She about to-
She about to-
Right, right, we about to all in here.
Right. Um, all right, cool, so I wanna just pop up real quick. It's a little slow, it's, it's okay. Um, I don't know, delete this right here. And this is gonna look a little different on your, on your phone, it's, it's gonna look a little sleeker actually. It's a little, it's a little slow.
You want it to be like-
Yeah. Yeah. It might take a little, some time. Uh, man, okay, cool, yeah, might take some time. All right, cool, so basically, um, I can stay right here and explain, yeah, so, basically what we've done is we've built an artificial intelligence that extrapolates data from a conversation that you have with a chatbot. And, uh, here is the chatbot. Now it's in testing mode right now. Um, just a second, I'm gonna just start a new conversation just so you can get to understand the field. All right, you don't give me- This is massively slow, it's okay.
Yeah, it is.
Sorry, sorry. Uh, so yeah, and-
Right.
Yeah, anyway, so we've, uh, we've built a chatbot basically that you have a conversation with, it extrapolates data from the conversation you have with it, it gets the location of your incident, if it happened right then and there, you press a button, we know exactly where you are. Uh, you also have an opportunity to put, uh, officer's information in it, both their gender, their name, their badge number, we have the largest database of officers in the country, we have even more than the FBI. Uh, and so, uh, we know what every officer looks like, we know, uh, what every officer's height is, that is our job. Uh, and so, uh, we will help you identify the officer during any interaction. Now, I'll say that this is, any interaction, it does not have to be, uh, a less than positive experience. It could also be a positive experience or just an okay experience. It can be one where you were arrested, ticketed, or given a warning to, doesn't matter. Uh, this isn't working, so I'm gonna just close out. You make sure you log out my Facebook when-
I'll log out.
This is stuff. Sensitive information here.
That's okay. Where can people go if they want to get more information on what you're doing?
Uh, just come talk to me.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, so, uh, just to, so theofficialswatapp.com, that's the website you can go to, uh, and it's just a landing page.
Say it one more time?
Yeah, theofficialswat, S W A T, app, dot com.
Okay.
SWAT stands for Safety with Accountability and Transparency. Yeah.
Thank, I'm gonna shut this down. Let's give him a round of applause, thank you so much. That was extremely informative. I just want to again thank our entire panel, let's give them a round of applause. Brandon Anderson, Dr. Edwin Chapman, Brother Darryl Green, Ndaba Mandela, and Reverend Tony Lee, thank you so much. What, you have a question? Oh, go ahead. Oh, do we have? Okay.
Um, I think that we have a couple of things, open to be called, told us in the morning, there, I have, um, New York City, and, um, this panel is called the First Leader, and you know, supporting black women has been, um, side, behind, uh, behind the scenes, they have a frontline of, uh, every black woman, and that's taking place, not just in America, but a problem I asked her, and I'm gonna bring it up on this panel. Because it's the First Leader, it's just-
Go, and I'm glad you asked, Ms. Anderson, you were-
Something that I decided to do together because of all, we always pay attention, um, and there's always a person who has a report, but we know all around, there's lots of these parts, and showing you, seeing this, and that, so we know, and the trick is that having to watch a black woman die, and a woman taking care of her, so I thought, like you said, we've come to me, and that he was having one or two, not with the community, because it's really made a lot of kids about how, and you have a man who supports you, so I thought if I had this ability to be able to stress up, to settle up, how can people afford, and solve some of these problems, and do this, and you're standing by, and you're first to be, I think, that's the thing.
To lead, to keep them on pace. No, but that, I'm glad you, I'm glad, because we, that is actually something that we talked about, and so, um, and I, and I totally agree because a lot of times, and I say, I, I'm in radio and television, and a lot of times when we have conversations, you're right, we have been at the forefront of, of, of everything, and so I also wanted to hear from black men in the community who were really, um, really on their grind, because one thing I can say, I hate, despise as a journalist, is for people to say we have no leaders. It aggravates me to no end. And we, we see the same people over and over and over again, but there are so many people who are leading our communities, and this panel up here to me is an extremely diverse panel that shows, um, how, how they're doing it and what more we can do in the community. What more we can do in the community. You had another question?
Well, I would say, I wasn't opinion, I just wanted, you know, it doesn't seem to hurt me, and no black women are, are, we do need, are pushing for her, and that's black individuals, you know, that's a black woman, I'll be doing this, and several people today that, 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 and so, that was my, my asking, not to be supportive of them, not in any way, but as we are talking about, hold one of the accountable, be the changes we want to be, I want to be so, and I ask that question.
Absolutely.
And thank you for your question, uh, and that's, that's what, that's the diversity of the Congressional Black Caucus Foundation's annual legislative conference. We put on over this year, we have 107 sessions. We have sessions that are catered to black women through the Black Women's Roundtable, the Black Women's Agenda, the Links. So there's so much diversity here that we don't have to point out the lack of diversity in one session. This session was for the brothers, but it's also for all of us to engage, because really, becoming the change you want to see is not gender-based, it's individual-based. But I wanted to give a platform for my black brothers, I'm a, another young lady who's raised by a single black dad. My mother died when I was 21 years old, and the next 20 years, my father was my Mr. Mom. So I appreciate black men who do what they're supposed to do and keep their head to the ground and raise their kids, and they don't have to bring anybody in, but they don't get hurt either. So as sisters, a woman in a black sorority, I can tell you, I have a huge network of support, but brothers, they don't get the same. So I just think in this panel alone, we wanted to make sure that it was more patriarchal-driven, and again, I hope that you got something out of this, and I didn't mean to hijack the mic, but, I kind of been doing that all week and I'm sorry, and I'm, I'm sorry I'm opining, but this is important to me, and I, and I hope you get something out of it, and this young lady wants to ask a question.
Thank you for your question, thank y'all for everything that y'all said today. Um, my name is Gabrielle Deculus, I'm from Baton Rouge, Louisiana. As you know, Baton Rouge has had a hard summer, um, from Alton Sterling being killed to the three officers being killed by a military vet, to the, this great man-made flood that we just had, that didn't get much, much media coverage, which has been, um, a lot worse than Katrina, Hurricane Katrina. So my question is more so for the doc, but I'm actually open to anyone else, um, responding to this as well. Um, for changemakers, people who are on the ground, um, leading efforts and, and, um, pushing with Black Lives Matter or responding to the underserved communities that were already in a bad place, now being flooded out, not having a place to live, you have these huge nonprofits who are not doing what they're, they're supposed to be doing with the money that they're receiving from around the world. How do we keep the changemakers going? How do we, how do we, um, combat the PTSD like was mentioned earlier? Um, and, and also, keep in mind that we've had these huge injustices that have happened in the midst of all of this, not to be completely distracted, you know, um, I do consider myself a leader in my community, but sometimes it, it's hard for me to stay, um, inspired and motivated, and then of course, lead the folks that are looking to me for, for guidance as well.
Doctor, I'm gonna have you answer that, we, we have literally probably like three, four minutes left, so I'll have to be brief, but go ahead, thank you.
Yeah, uh, there's a study out, um, by Johns Hopkins called The Long Shadow, where they followed, um, uh, first graders for 20 years, and then they look back. The change occurs even before you're five years old. So, so from birth to, to five years old, most of that child's personality has already developed. So we need to, we already know what the problems are in our community. We have children growing up in situations that are not ideal. We're gonna have to nurture those children as a community, and we're gonna have to bring them into a setting that we can, that we control. And the best place is our faith community, you know, from my, my perspective, because you, that, nobody comes in there and, 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 and runs it other than the pastor and the, and the, uh, the board, uh, it, so in that setting, we can, we can mentor, we can, uh, uh, we can give the families whatever they need, but we're gonna have to do something to the, up to the age of five. Once that child goes to school, if he's got that personality that, that Darryl described, that, that Rufus Mayfield described, then, you know, because it's fascin-, it fascinates me to hear what people go through, but they look back and they're on a trajectory that they've determined that, uh, regardless of what happens to them, they're, they, they're focused, and I think it happens in that timeframe, where the cortisol levels are, are, are developed. Some pediatricians feel that it even occurs in utero, that while the mother's carrying the baby, whatever stresses is, 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 um, imparted upon her is transmitted to that baby. And, and, uh, so, so we do know up to the age of five, uh, most of that personality has developed, and we have to work on that part of it so that, uh, when they go to school, they have the confidence to move forward, uh, and can say that they can do what everybody else says they can't do, you know, and, uh, when I grew up, I grew up with a lot of guys and they did a lot of things and, but, but, uh, I always, uh, you know, was, the, they'll look back now and tell you that, uh, I had my own mindset, uh, uh, in first grade.
Thank you, thank you for that. Let's give them a round of applause. Um, as we come to it, and I just want to give a little, a little word, and this is just from 15 years at NBC, working with a lot of different correspondents, and eight years at Radio One, and I implore everybody that's here to, and I, I love my industry and I love my field, but I also know what goes behind the scene of a lot of times. If you want to know the answer to something or how to do something, I encourage you to not always start with your evening news, to not believe everything that you hear, um, on TV, on the radio, to do your own research, because a lot of people don't know, you have sometimes a, uh, a producer or an assistant producer who is maybe very young, looking up, doing research, trying to find information and handing it over to somebody else who then reports it and may not even check a script. I've been in plenty of boardrooms where I've been the only African American, um, in the room, sometimes a meeting is the only woman in the room, and it is, uh, sometimes frustrating to try to get our narrative across or to di-, or to give a different perspective when the, uh, 2008 housing- When the 2008 housing crash happened, I found myself trying to explain how black people got in this situation. And that was a one they referenced, or I heard a lot of comments about, well, how come you, uh, black people didn't know this, or why didn't black people know that? But I understand what's taking place in our community, and so there are many of us behind the scenes who are fighting and trying to push, and Reverend Lee, you know, I'm sure, because you're also on the radio as well, and many of us here have experienced incidences with media where we are trying to change our narrative, and I always encourage people, support black-owned newspapers, support, although we don't have many black stations, support black-owned stations, we have to support our own community. One favorite thing that I live by, that I love that Malcolm X said, and he said, "We wouldn't have to boycott if we supported our own." And I, and I try to live by that, because if we live somebody, by somebody else's narrative, we tend to believe the other narrative, but when we actually take the time out to dig, to look for information and not to just believe everything that comes across your TV, you find out truth, and truth can be very hard to find, but when you find it, it awakens you, and you will find that you may be the only one in the room that really has truth. So I just wanna encourage our audience in that. And again, let's give our panel a round of applause. Thank you so much. Also, Ms. Anderson, I wanna give you a round of applause, thank you for putting this together. She is strong, says, I love her. Thank you for coming out, and as we end, let us know what you're doing, it's about support. If you have organizations that you're involved in, let us know so that we can communicate and support each other. Thank you.